Okay. Good evening. Sorry we were a little late coming out of closed session. Hi, good. Welcome to our semi-annual student and staff recognition event. We're excited to see all of you here this evening. It's really fun to see all these faces. This is a favorite meeting of ours to celebrate our wonderful students in athletics, in civics, in government, in art, in leadership, in athletics, in academics. And I also wanted to give a special shout-out to groups in our city that aren't part of the school, but they are part of the school when they come and help like this. For instance, the Daughters of the American Revolution, the plein air painters, and our PTA reflections. So, thank you. We have no report out of closed session. Is there any public comment on the agenda within the subject matter? Clerk Hills?
We have a card from Gary Kasich.
Okay, Mr. Kasich.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be out of here in just less than a minute. I just wanted to take the opportunity with what a lot of people want to say. Thanks for putting this together. I know it was a lot of work from a lot of different people to get this all pulled together. I know the board's got a lot on their agenda, and taking the time to respect this time-honored tradition is appreciated by everyone. So, on with the show.
Clerk Hills, that's the last? To our employee recognitions.
I'm sorry, do you... There are two of us have something to speak, but it's not on the agenda.
But it is on the agenda.
No, it's not.
Okay. Would you like to come forward?
Very much, yes.
I'd like to commend you for finally putting the real constituents of this board front and center tonight: the students, faculty, and staff. These are your people. On another note, I attended the Closed Session Interim Superintendent Meeting on January 16th, and I have to say I was frustrated that you all couldn't see the forest for the trees in not choosing Jeff Dixon as interim. There were over 70 written public comments supporting this appointment. He's qualified and capable, possesses the depth of knowledge to run the district day-to-day, and has the trust of the community to do so. It is unfathomable to me that you would rather waste valuable time, which could be spent searching for a permanent superintendent, on this interim quest. You have someone sitting in front of you who can do the job immediately. I implore you, do the right thing and move forward with Mr. Dixon as interim. Then get on with the critical work of finding a suitable replacement for Dr. Valoria. Thank you.
Good evening. I was extremely surprised and disappointed that the board did not select Mr. Dixon last Thursday as the interim superintendent. He has the experience, knowledge, and skillset to excel at that position. He's respected by the staff and admired by the teachers. He has the overwhelming support of the community. It is very clear that Ms. Morgan and Mr. Hills have an agenda. They really represent Village Laguna and Sensible Laguna. I will remind you that you were elected to represent all of the students and parents in the school district, and not just a subset of adults living in the community, the majority of whom do not have students in the district. I implore you to make the wise and obvious decision next Monday, and stop wasting time looking for an interim superintendent. Thank you very much.
Are there any more speakers? Okay. We will now officially begin the recognition of our staff and students. Mr. Conlin, will you start with Employee of the Year? Board members?
Thank you, President Perry. So, I'd like to introduce... Good evening, I'm Mike Conlin, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. Good evening, welcome, everybody. I'd like to begin by inviting our classified employee, our division winners. So, if Ellen Exalas, Oscar Marones Ramirez, and Dory Bunting are here, please come forward. As the board can make their way, we're gonna just share a few words. So, Ellen was unable to be with us tonight, but I want to speak for Ellen as well. So, as the LBHS registrar, Ellen is often the first point of contact for parents and students on campus. She's patient, analytical, methodical in her practice of assessing and posting student grades. She consistently reflects on site-level practice and refines and remote processes and procedures to be effective and efficient. We're lucky to have her on the LBHS and LBUSD team, so congrats to Ellen. Oscar, I've got a few words that I'll read on behalf of your new principal, Mr. Turner. So, Oscar is our Division Winner for Custodial Maintenance Nutrition and Security Services category. Every campus needs an Oscar. When you have multiple buildings, roofs, doors, windows, walls, gates, and water fountains, having someone like Oscar is a gift. He's a jack-of-all-trades. He will listen to the needs of staff, but always be proactive in improving the TW facility. For instance, he recently asked if he could spruce up the NPR with some new paint and curtains. How amazing is that? So, congratulations, Oscar. Dora, a few words to share from Irene. So, Dory has served... She's our Paraprofessional Instructional Assistance Category winner. Dory has served in multiple roles within the district as an instructional assistant, including our lead IA role at the high school. She is currently at the high school where she serves her preferred age group. Dory can be described as a true advocate for students. She is an amazing problem solver. She thinks outside the box and is always able to find solutions. Students and staff alike love her. She's flexible and always gives 110%, regardless of the role assigned to her. So, we're very grateful for your service. Thank you. All right. I'd like to now bring up Mr. Turner, who's going to introduce our Classified Employee of the Year. Be one moment.
Ms. Paula Farino, are you in the house? Do I really need to say nice things about you? I mean, come on. As a health clerk at Top of the World Elementary, Paula Farino sets the gold standard for excellence, seamlessly balancing technical expertise, compassionate care, and proactive problem-solving. Paula is much more than a skilled health professional. She is the heart of our campus. She fosters a welcoming and supportive environment for students, staff, and families alike. She knows the name of every student at Top of the World, making each child feel seen and valued. Her warmth and professionalism create an atmosphere of trust, enabling her to build strong relationships with families and colleagues. Thank you, Ms. Paula. And now, our LBUSD Teacher of the Year, Ms. June Hosokawa. Mrs. Hosokawa is a student's teacher and a teacher's teacher. She truly knows her students' names, faces, and stories, what motivates them, and how to bring out the best in them. She is also an invaluable staff member who collaborates with colleagues, brings a smile to meetings, and is willing to try new things that could benefit her students, including having me in and helping teach math lessons. The best compliment between educators is that you would put your own kid in someone's class. I know I would be thrilled to have Mrs. Hosokawa teach my kids for a year. Congratulations.
All right. I am Dr. Julie Hatchell, and the principal at El Moro Elementary School. And we are here to honor several of our students from both El Moro and Top of the World. First, we are going to start with the Boo Blast T-shirt Design Contest winner. And each year at El Moro, our PTA hosts an art contest to select one piece of art to be featured on the following year's Boo Blast T-shirts. We love seeing our staff members and our kids wearing, and even some of our parents, wearing these shirts throughout the month of October, and they span back decades. So, we are honored tonight to present our Boo Blast T-shirt winner, who will be featured on our 2026 shirt. And congratulations, come on up, Leiko Deng. Leiko, come on up. Is it Leiko? Leiko's not here tonight, so we'll celebrate Leiko at school tomorrow. All right. Next up, President Dee Perry mentioned that we are honored to partner with our agencies outside of the school district, and one of the agencies that we partner with is the city of Laguna Beach. And they run our Holiday Art Palette Contest, and we're excited each year that several of our students use this as an opportunity to showcase their artwork, and then, of course, they're displayed around the city. And we are very proud when we get to say, "Those are our kids that did that." So, this year, we have one student from Top of the World... We have one student from El Moro, Linus Wong. Is Linus here? Oh, there's Linus. All right.
Can you do a picture now? And from Top of the World, Lily Adair. Kira Doll. Vivian Gu. Emma Kopernik. Italy La Placa. Adeline Palm. And Ella Shen.
All right. Our next category is the plein air winners or participants. And each year, the Laguna Plain Air Painters Association hosts its plein air invitational, inviting students from both Top of the World and El Moro to set up a canvas at Heisler Park to capture the beauty of Laguna Beach in an original plein air painting. Tonight, we will recognize students from both of our campuses who were selected to participate in this prestigious event. So, from El Moro, come on up. If you're here, I have Elle Donaldson. Ally Matani. Dylan Nash. Willow Payne Schroll. Dylan Tian. And Caroline Walden.
And from Top of the World, Will Dodge. Vanessa Evans. Milla Lewis. Clayton McChesney. Tyler St. John. Victoria Swanson. And Frankie Terrio.
All right. Our next category is PALS, and PALS stands for Peer Assistance Leadership. It's a phenomenal opportunity for our members to serve as mentors in helping their peers or younger students with academic, social, or emotional challenges. Activities can include mentoring, tutoring, conflict resolution, saying hi to students as they enter campus, or promoting positive behaviors, all aimed at building a stronger sense of community, leadership skills, and academic success. We'd also like to give a huge thank you to Mrs. Vogi, who I know she's here tonight, and Mrs. Anaya, who is the leader of Top of the World for their dedication to our PALS students. So, come on up. As we read your names, we have quite a few of you, so we'll need to have you come on up and scrunch in a little bit. Got it? All right, I know you can do it. Finn Anderson. Tallulah Berman. Lennon Bonfeldt. William Kaufman. Brooke Landarby. Lucian Einmann. Yenai Goodman. Harper Haverland. Georgia Jones Niedaberger. Margaret Kimball. Claire Kirby. Scarlett Colak. Addison Lillistrand. Daisy Lu. Molly Mahoney. Tegan Mahoney. Danae Orwella. Henry Rolfin Gamal. Summer Samuelian. Sailor Stalker. Elspeth Strathman. And Emma Tran. Come on up, Sierra. I'm so sorry we didn't have you on the list, but yes, thank you. Sierra! Last but definitely not least, thank you, Sierra.
And from Top of the World, Shama Akuri. Tallulah Amin. Rose Bugbee. Tabby Burge. Laura Kakar. Juno Calisto. Piper Cargill. Sarah Cisneros. Charlotte Collings. Judah Espinosa. Arvin Fardanfar. Camilla Fein. Vivian Gu. Liberty Hensel. Claire Hitzl. Jasper Irving. Grayson Kibbe. Gray Lee. Avalon Lombardo. Charlie McConnell. Taya McDuffie. Madeline Miller. Willa Reed. Frida Romig. Sophia Shohei. Noor Talloy. Drew Tackich. Mackenzie Vogotsky. And Mila Watson.
All right. I'm gonna go through some of the reflections entries. Now, excuse me, I did put all of them together, both elementary and high school, so I might go flipping through a little faster, but I wanted to go over just a little bit. The PTA reflections, this is from through the year, and I'm gonna celebrate all the different awards. So, every year, students are invited entries based on a theme. This year's theme is Accepting Imperfection. We had across the board 109 total entries across the four schools, which is pretty amazing, and all of these are judged by professionals in the field. And so, we have artwork in dance choreography, film production, literature, music composition, photography, and visual arts. So, this year's judges, we had literature, film, photography, visual arts, and music composition, and we actually had entries across all of them, which was pretty amazing. So, just a little bit of highlights for the Award of Excellences. We had... I also want to thank the volunteers that we had. I am Maria Lamb, the district chair, and then we had Susan Whitehouse at El Moro. I also helped out at TOW. We had Jennifer Goritsky and Jennifer Rope at Thurston and the high school. So, in photography, we had Sterling, which I think is here. He won an Award of Excellence there for TOW. So, Sterling, you can come up and hang out the whole time. And this is his amazing photography. Oh, oop, oop. Oh, I'm going too fast. Sorry. Okay. And then Asher, who is my son, actually, who isn't here because he got hurt at school. This is his Award of Excellence for El Moro. This is called "The Machine." And then we have Leo Choi. And this is Fallen Tree. This is also a TOW. This is intermediate photography. We actually have a film production for Penelope, if she's here. Superstar Stalker Player, this is pretty amazing. This actually advanced to fourth district. And then literature, we have Piper Stevens for second grade. This also... Good job, Piper. This also advanced to fourth district from TOW. We also have Caroline Walden for fifth grade. This piece was pretty amazing. This one made me cry. And then we have Ethan Kopernik with his "This World's Resistance." This is also going to fourth district from TOW. And in visual arts, we have Gemma Collins from TOW. Good job, Gemma. And then we have Clayton Christensen from... He's a kindergartner, made this amazing little world from El Moro. I don't think he's here today because kinder, he's young. And then we have Carolina from TOW. This is grade three. And then we have Ms. Emma Tran from El Moro, fifth grade. Disregard that. And then we have Jade, who also couldn't make it here tonight, who actually entered in a primary dance choreography. This is one of the first years we've had dance in primary, which is pretty amazing. Okay. Okay, that's it. Victoria. And then I'm gonna name off the rest of the winner for El Moro. We have Jade, and then we have Clayton, and then we have Ariana. Emma Tran, Xander Patel. And Harper Haverland. Good job, Harper! And then from TOW, I have Gemma Collins, Piper Stevens, Sterling got a ton. His photography was pretty amazing. Carolina Amadou, sorry if I'm pronouncing that wrong. Camille Fein, and Chase Provost.
And I want to... Can we give a round of applause to Morgan also for coordinating reflections? That's just... Thank you, Morgan. It's a huge job. Next up is our Sea Lion Senate. This is our second year that El Moro has implemented a new Sea Lion Senate to increase student agency by elevating their voice in problem-solving and creating a positive student center. and creating a positive student-centered environment on our campus. On a trimesterly basis, each of our third, fourth, and fifth grade classes elected two student senators to represent their classes at student focus groups. As a result of elevating their voices, these students advocated for bringing back popular menu items in the cafeteria, including popcorn chicken and cinnamon rolls. And they also helped our PTA to refine and focus our student activities. They implemented a lemonade day to celebrate the culmination of our state testing season. And tonight, we'd like to honor our inaugural Sea Lion Senators for this school year and thank them for making a difference at El Moro. Come on up, as I call your name, Madison Chubb. Ynai Goodman. Harper Haverland. Sierra Heinrichsen. I'm gonna say it twice because I missed you last time. Sierra Heinrichsen. Gigi Jockinson. Luca Kalili. Rose McGilvery. James Nash. Dylan Nash. Stella Robertson. Summer Samuelian. Maxton Sebring. And Taj Upchurch.
And for our final elementary recognition, we're going to have the Student Council from top of the world. These students are natural leaders elected by their peers and perform leadership duties that benefit the school and community. Each student exhibits model behavior such as kindness, problem solving, and time management, right? They must be upstanders who are kind and self-driven as well as responsible. These Student Council members have all proven they've earned their position, and they make me incredibly proud every day. So when I call your name, come on up. Marissa Bergen. Red Darrow. Giselle Dai. Brooke Filialt. Fiona Hills. River Hunt. Olivia McNally. Allison O'Brien. Ariana Ospina. Emily Pierce. Sadie Rayhal. And Tori Swanson.
Congratulations again to all of you. We will now take a break or intermission before the older students come up. Thank you for coming. Please take your seats. We're ready to start the second part. Thank you. Okay, we're going to do our secondary recognitions, but we're gonna do a little change in the schedule. We're going to start with Morgan Lamb and the PTA Reflections program because she has to do this twice. She already did it. She needs to go home and get her kids to bed. So go ahead, Morgan. And by the way.
Hello, darling.
I love the theme, Accepting Imperfections.
Me too. I did not come up with it, but you can enter to come up with it. So I think it's pretty amazing. So, okay, thank you for letting me skip the line. I don't mind talking twice, but this dust has been killing my throat, so. And I've gotta put baby spit. So I am really excited to honor our secondary. So that's Thurston and the High Schools Reflections entries. These, I have to say, now that elementary's gone, these were hard ones for our judges, especially when it came to Thurston and the High School. The High School was really hard. Like in between who got awards was like points or half a points difference. I didn't even know they did half a points, but they did this time. So Reflections, if you don't know about it, this year was Accepting Imperfection. So every year, it's a different theme. And students can enter along six different categories. That's dance choreography, film production, literature, music composition, photography, and visual arts. This year was one of the first years that we had entries across the entire board. And that includes elementary and secondary, which I think was pretty amazing. And then you enter, that's based on your artist statement. So you have to write like kind of your, you know, why this relates to accepting imperfection. And then that is then sent to blind judges, who your name is then removed. The judges look and they score it on themes and creativity and technique. We had a total across the four schools of 109 entries, which was, and they were all just amazing, which I made, they're all sitting at my house and I love it. And I'm like, look at all this beautiful art. So these are our judges this year. They're all professionals in their fields. I also want to thank our volunteers. I think most of them left. I'm Morgan Lamb, if you don't know me. I am the district chair for Reflections this year. We had Susan up at El Moro. I helped out at TOW. Then we had Jennifer, both Jennifers at Thurston and the High School. So in photography, I'm just gonna pump through these really fast. We have Abby. I'm only showing art that was the Award of Excellence, but we are gonna honor and print out. And we do have certificates for everyone that placed. If Abby's here, that's great. This is her amazing wilted flower. And she is advancing to fourth district. And then Anderson's at the High School. This is Oasis. This is just brilliant. This, this, this photography for this was probably the hardest scoring ever at the High School. This was the half a point thing that I talked about. I actually had to have it double judged. And then we have Sam O'Neil, See You Again, for Film Production. This also advanced to fourth district. And then in Literature, we have Laura Trunkay in her Literature. And then we have Parker Bryan in his High School Literature. Pretty amazing work. And then in Visual Arts, all right, we have Taylor Jones, Crumpled Canvas. This was a really beautiful work of art. They actually drew everything and then crumpled it, which I think the imperfection shown in that was pretty amazing. And then this is Elena Merritt. This is actually a full-on wearable corset that she made that was written with different kind of like fundamental parts of being a female and what that means and kind of that skinny standard that we shouldn't live up to. It was pretty phenomenal. In Dance Choreography, we have Elena again with Self-Talk. This is, she's a very talented, talented person, which was a pretty amazing thing. And then we have Kevin Ho at Fly to Summer. This was an amazing piece. I honestly like listened to it and closed my eyes and I felt, and it like took me to Vancouver and listening to things. It was pretty phenomenal. So those are the awards that we have that advanced to fourth district for Thurston and Middle School. But if anyone's here that did win an award, that would be Taylor Jones, Laura Trunkay, Hayden Patel, Abby Carey, Ace Entress, Grayson Jurinsky, Laura Trunkay, or Laura won twice, Caroline Barber, and Kevin Ho. From Laguna Beach High School, we have Elena Merritt, Berlin Fox, Sasha West, Anderson Corey, Diana King, Jack Poe, Parker Bryan, Isabella Tran, William Golden, Sam O'Neil, Elena Merritt, and Harnaker. I don't think any of our high school students or middle school students are here, so that's fine. But I want to congratulate everyone because they really did an amazing work in the Reflections this year. So thank you.
Okay, now, Principal Vidal will start our secondary recognition. Oops, maybe not.
No, they're good.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Joe Vidal, proud principal at Thurston Middle School. And thank you for joining all of us to celebrate some of our amazing students tonight. I would like to start by recognizing students that participated in the Daughters of the American Revolution. This year, the Patience Right Chapter National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution held its annual American History Essay Contest for grades five through eight in Laguna Beach schools. This year's theme was Enjoying a New Kind of Tea Party, which focused on women's participation in the Revolutionary War era and the Tea Party protests. I would like to point out that one of these participants, Eliana Simon, won the contest and had the opportunity to read her essay during a chapter meeting at the American Legion. And her essay will go on to the regionals and hopefully make it to the national competition in Washington, DC. At this time, I would like to call up Eliana Simon. Eva Low. Eva Mustafi. Grace Puffer. And Estella Su. All right, for our next round, Thurston would like to recognize the following students who have dedicated their time to Model United Nations this year. The Model UN Club is a place where students learn about various global issues, conduct detailed research around these particular topics, and strengthen their debate, research, and communication skills. At this time, we would like to honor Dastin Arshadi. Rostin Arshadi. Eli Arum. Zia Bell. Mateo Bori. Cal Dabs. Oliver Deveraux. Luca Gregg. Adrian Houscheck. Finn Lidstone Sweet. Van Liston. Stella Mackenzie. Esme Newton. Rebecca Robinson. Macy Shear. Cole Silsby. Oliver Teo. And James Wilson. Oh, yeah, maybe. All right, and now for our Patriots Day Essay winner. So each year, the Patriots Day Parade Committee opens an essay contest for our eighth graders. This year's theme is our Laguna Heritage. The committee provides a prompt, and students are encouraged to enter the contest. And out of numerous submissions this year, Ethan Colley's essay was chosen as the winner. Ethan focused his essay on what he believes makes our town and community special. He concluded by saying, no matter where you go or where you end up, being a part of Laguna's heritage and history will stay in your heart forever. At this time, I would like to congratulate Ethan Colley on his amazing victory. And finally, for our final recognition, Thurston would like to recognize another round of amazing artists, our plane air students who spent the day with professional painters at Heysler Park to create pieces depicting landscape views of beautiful Laguna Beach. At this time, we would like to call up Austin Angle. Joshua Fine. Harper Hand. Madeline Lee. Jordan Rutledge-Bab. Joya Shirtn Lee. Quinn Swanson in Hudson Wedge Panic.
Good evening. My name is Denise Selby, and I'm the proud athletic director at Laguna Beach High School. And we are going to recognize eight of our wonderful high school student athletes. And once they get up here, I'll share a little bit with you about why we are honoring them this evening. So I would like for Dylan Williams, Gavin Good, Sadie Holmes, Bailey Beena, Blake Borquist, Charlie Hunt, Enzo Casolari, and Presley Jones to come forward. They're really good at following instructions because they have coaches that sometimes get on them, right? So we're gonna start with water polo. So Dylan and Gavin step forward so they can see who you are. Dylan, babe, Gavin, okay. So Dylan and Gavin. Dylan Williams scored 100 goals this season with a six-goal game in our first-round CIF win against Los Al. Los Al is kind of a power. We're sort of the little guy against Los Al, so it's a big deal that we upset them in that first round. Dylan was also First Team All-League and First Team All-CIF in Division One. He's a tremendous all-around great player, and he has the ability to compete at a very high level against the best competition in the country. He's a junior, and we're excited about the future. Dylan, congratulations. And we have his tenacious teammate Gavin Good. Gavin, according to his coach, is the definition of a grinder. He does the little things right. He plays 100%, 100% of the time. He fills gaps on the defense, and he's a great facilitator and was a lockdown defender. He fills gaps on the defense, and he's a great facilitator and was a lockdown defender. Many of his matchups were against the best players on the other team, and he won those battles. Unfortunately, he was injured about how far through the season? A little over halfway? Interesting, yeah. So it hurt us. It hurt us a lot to not have him during CIF, but he continued to influence the team in other ways because he's just a great teammate. We know that he loves his teammates, and we know that he's going to continue to have great things ahead of him for Laguna Beach Water Polo. Gavin Good. By the way, he was First Team All-League in a very tough league, so proud of him. All right, you guys could step back now. Okay. Next, we have volleyball. Sadie Holmes and Blake Borquist, step forward. And then I'm also going to talk about Bailey Beena, our third player. So first, we have Blake. Blake, wave so they know which one you are. Okay. Blake was an important contributor on this year's CIF Championship Volleyball Team. She's only a sophomore. Her elite volleyball skills were demonstrated often, and it is easy to see she has incredible athletic talent that's going to allow her to develop into an even more dominant player. Blake's performance earned her First Team, the First Team All-CIF honor, and we're looking forward to her continued success next season. Blake Borquist, congratulations, Blake. Sadie, I'm going to put you off until after Bailey. Bailey's not here, but Bailey is supposed to be watching online if this is being streamed. She thinks it is. I hope it is. Bailey is representing the Women's Varsity CIF Championship Team as one of the captains. Sadie was the other captain. Bailey was only one of two seniors as well, along with Sadie. Bailey and Sadie were in a unique position of being the leaders of a very, very young team. We had a lot of ninth and 10th graders that played a lot of really important time, and so they had a unique role in having to kind of lead those youngsters through a very interesting season. And it was interesting because they lost a lot. They lost a lot in the beginning. It was discouraging. There were some, you know, we had to keep that morale up, and I think Bailey and Sadie both did a great job with that. If you know Bailey, you know she is a natural energetic spirit about her that's contagious. And this attitude had a wonderful impact on the team. So Bailey, I know you're at a tournament someplace. Congratulations. I'm going to miss you. And then finally, we have Sadie Holmes. Sadie, I'm just going to start off with this, was named the CIF Player of the Year. Really big deal. Really big deal. As I mentioned previously, she provided great senior leadership to this young team in her role as a captain. She was instrumental in helping this team win the championship, and she is just an absolutely dominant player who can quickly change the flow of a game. When I'd see her come in, we might have given up a few points consecutively, and I just felt like, okay, she's going to, she's going to kind of get things going. Sadie will play volleyball next year at Weber State University, and I know that you're going to do great things, Sadie. We're going to miss you. Thank you. Okay. We're going to go ahead, step back. Thank you. And next, we have Charlie Hunt. Charlie, man of the hour. Charlie, Charlie is an exemplary young man who consistently led our football team by example. He was a great teammate who got along with everyone in our program. His football skills allowed him to be a three-way star, not a two-way star. He was a three-way star. He was hugely successful on offense, defense, and special teams. How many punt returns and kickoff returns did you have for touchdowns this year? Don't be shy. A lot. It was incredible. He could turn, I mean, he was, he was amazing. And his performance on the field not only earned him All-CIF, First Team All-CIF, but he was also named the MVP of the Foxtrot League. So again, a really big deal. We're extremely proud of Charlie as a football player, but even more proud of him as a young man. So thank you, Charlie. Great job. And then our final two award winners are our CIF Athlete of Character Award recipients, one female and one male athlete. So I'm going to first talk about Presley Jones, who unfortunately had a game schedule change, and she has a game this evening. She's playing water polo. So every year, CIF honors a male and female athlete for Athlete of Character from Erie Orange County High School. And what we do at Laguna is we ask coaches to nominate players that they think are deserving, to write up why they think that player is deserving, and then we ask our staff, who know all of these student athletes, to vote on these awards. And we had nearly 70 staff members vote on the awards, and Enzo and Presley were our award winners. Presley is not only a high-level athlete, but just a wonderful human being. As captain of the girls' water polo team, she is a great team leader who leads by example. Coach Teetz says she is probably one of the most coachable athletes she's ever known. She exhibits a thoughtful, compassionate leadership style that resonates well with the younger players. And this was really, really stood out to me. Coach Teetz said, "She's not only a joy to have on our team, but we are not us without her." So she's that influential. Presley is very deserving of this award, and she'll be playing water polo at UCLA next year. Enzo, go ahead and step forward. Enzo is our male CI Athlete of Character Award recipient. As a senior athlete, Enzo has consistently demonstrated exceptional leadership on and off the field. He leads by example. We hear that a lot of our leaders in athletics. He inspires his teammates with his dedication to improvement. Beyond his athletic achievements, Enzo is known for his care and support of others, fostering a positive, inclusive environment for his peers. He has earned respect through his sportsmanship and his ability to motivate those around him. His strong work ethic extends beyond athletics, as he is an excellent student in the classroom, and he's a role model and a cornerstone of the cross-country and track programs. So congratulations, Enzo, for this award.
Good evening. I'm Brian Carlson. I'm the assistant principal at the high school. It's my pleasure tonight to recognize some of our academic achievers on our campus. But before I do that, I wanted to thank all of our families for taking your time tonight. We know it's not always an easy call to carve that time out and be here, but it is so important for us to take the opportunity as we recognize some students who remind us on a daily basis that the world, our community, is in some amazing hands. So thank you, students, for doing that on every single day. Tonight, we want to start by recognizing two students for the Junior Citizen of the Year. Can Lily Bazargan and Carter McKenzie please come up? The Laguna Beach Junior Citizen of the Year is an award given to students in Laguna Beach High School for their academic achievement, community service, leadership, and athletic accomplishments. The award is presented to the annual, at the annual Laguna Beach Patriots Day Parade, which takes place on the first Saturday of March. We couldn't pick two better students to represent the Junior Citizens of the Year at Laguna Beach High School. Let's give it up for Lily and Carter. Lily, don't go too far because next, we're going to call up our National Merit Commended Scholars. Lily, come on back up, please. And also Christian Callahan, Peter Kurtz, Kalen Mulvaney, Julian Reichel, and Alexander A National Merit Scholar is a high school student who achieved a high score on the PSAT, placing them within the top 3% to 4% of test takers nationwide, signifying strong academic potential. Essentially, it's a recognition for excellent academic performance on the PSAT without the opportunity for a full scholarship. This recognition can still be a positive addition to a student's college application, demonstrating high academic achievement. Let's congratulate these students. And for our final recognitions tonight, we are going to recognize our National Merit semifinalists. Can Frederick Butler and Lyric Hagan please come on up? These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition that will recognize 7,000 National Merit Scholarships worth nearly, nearly $28 million. About 95% of the semifinalists typically become finalists, and half of the finalists will win a National Merit Scholarship. More than 16,000 of high scores representing less than 1% of the nation's high school graduating seniors qualify as semifinalists. Only the semifinalists have an opportunity to win the scholarship award. This is a very prestigious honor, and we wish both of our students the best in qualifying for finalist standing. Let's give them a big round of applause.
Boy, what wonderful students we have. Now, that wraps up our winter recognition event. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Now you have a choice if you'd like to go home or if you'd like to stay for the meeting. We'll have about a five-minute break here. And I just wanted to say we got several comments wondering about us doing this without Dr. Kelly being here. And I want you to know, we all talked about it as a board, and Dr. Kelly is out of the country, so he could not zoom in, and we thought it was important to at least get started on being able to interview a firm. He really wants to be there when we select the final interim superintendent, so we are doing that on Monday when he's back. I just want you to know, we took all that into consideration. He's fine with this. Okay. The board has received four proposals for search firms for the superintendent search. Tonight, we'll discuss which firms to interview for consideration. Once those selections are made, interviews will be conducted at a future special meeting. Are there any questions? After we, I should have said, after we have our discussion, if the public wants to comment, they're certainly welcome to. Is there a motion to select a specific firm to be interviewed? Do we want to talk about the different firms? Did people fill out the sheet? Or was that helpful? That valuation sheet?
President Perry, I went through and read all of the different proposals from each company, and I've got questions for each, so I'd like to make a motion to bring all four back to interview.
I couldn't understand you. I don't know why.
She wants to bring all four back to interview.
So, the interview process is an open meeting where you have four separate groups come in, and it's a lot, I think, and not, I mean, it's a lot of time for all of us and for members of the community. I'm not sure we need to bring in all four people, but that's just my...
Mr. Hills, do you have any opinions on this?
I don't think, I've been to a few of these when I was a parent, and we were going through selections, and they had, they had three or four, and it was, it was, if there's, if there's any of these four that people feel really strong about and want to see, that's fine. If, if there's opposition to any of them, or somebody feels that one of them is, doesn't merit being included, but I think that we could manage, we could manage the whole group.
I need a second for that motion. Didn't, I guess I didn't get it. To bring them all back. Okay. Are there questions?
I would second it.
Okay. Questions?
How, how long do you think it takes to interview each one, approximately? Because I don't, I mean, I know I have got specific questions, but, I mean, it's possible we could send those questions to each firm and then decide on which one we want to bring back, or we could have all four zoom in and do an interview or something. But I think if we're going to do the process thoroughly and transparently, we should at least consider them. I mean, that's my opinion.
Consider all of them.
To make sure we're vetting the right one, yeah.
I think it's usually a discussion in an open meeting. So, I mean, if people want to argue to bring all four of them in, yeah, I'm not going to argue against.
I, I would prefer not to bring all four in. I think, from what, from what I know and what I've been told, many of these search firms will bring the same candidates. You know, we're looking at what services they offer and who they've done it for, and I don't know if you've had a chance to call any of their references, but I, I feel like I could narrow it down to two. I don't know if anybody else feels like that.
Yeah, the one comment I would make, I, I think all of these firms, from reading through the proposals, they are all reasonable firms. They all work with many candidates. You know, they're going to bring in many of the same people. The one concern I have that I'll just be upfront about is that through no fault of the firm, I think educational associates got mired in a lot of our political problems in the transition with the appointment around the, the initial effort to appoint an interim. And I think that that creates a possible perception problem for the public, given the way some of that played out. So I have some concerns about that.
We don't have educational associates.
I meant leadership associates. I'm so sorry. Yeah, leadership associates.
I'm not totally aware of how leadership associates was involved. How were they involved in the transition? We haven't had anybody help us with the transition other than Tony from our law firm.
No, but we had a very difficult political interaction around trying to appoint an interim superintendent who is from leadership associates. And I think it was, it creates some difficult political issues through no fault of the firms.
Then I don't think we should discount leadership associates because I honestly did not know that that's who she worked with. So that would be through no fault of leadership associates. We probably shouldn't discount them for that.
It's, it's not that it's the fault of leadership associates, but it's a very complicated situation, and I think it creates a public perception problem.
Only if it's created. I don't think there was one, though.
Do we want to go through, do we want to go through each? Okay. Then let's begin with... Okay, well, then, let's begin with Education Leadership Services. Questions, pluses, concerns? I noticed they're a newer firm. They don't quite have the depth, and they have not done as many.
Some of the comments that I've made in my notes are just based on what they, what their, what their information offers. A lot of the associations that they're members of appear to be California-based. American Associates, Association, American Association, excuse me, of School Administrators Superintendents. Is that a nationwide, or is that a California? I'm just trying to get a feel for how broad their reach is, if they're a newer firm. Do they, are they members of anything outside of California? Because most of the memberships that they tap into, it looks like, are primarily in California. And then, when they talk about their deliverables, I wanted to know if some of the things that are included that some of the other firms offer is, do they help negotiate and do the research on the salary and the benefits that would be brought forward in part of the offer? And then, they also talk about four individual ELS team member days for interviews, focus groups, and/or town hall meetings. Is that for 24-hour sessions, or is that 96 hours of work? Or how is that four days, four individual ELS team members' time broken up into?
So I think some of these questions are part of the interview process, that when we talk to firms that come in. I mean, this seems like a perfectly fine firm, but I don't know that we can get into that level of detail in this meeting, because we don't, yeah.
Let's go on to the second Superintendent Search Firm. Educational Support Services Group.
I would support interviewing them. My question is around their relationship to the law firm. That is a question that we can talk about when we, if we decide to bring them in. But I think it's, you know, they're a solid firm.
Can somebody speak on the relationship that Dr. Keller, Dr. Stephen Keller, has with the district? And when he was here, he was the Assistant Superintendent? Do we know, because it doesn't reference it, it only mentions it once. But then I don't see where it references it again. How long was he here?
I don't remember. It was about three or four years, it seems like.
I mean, same. I made a lot of questions when they talk about, you know, the board-determined partners. Let's see, Education Partner Outreach. How many forums would they do? Is it all one forum, where the whole community is invited to participate in the one forum? Or are they going to do different forums? Because it says "a community forum is scheduled", so that any employee or member of the public can offer in-person input. Online survey opens. I think one of the things that, when we had a superintendent search eight years ago, is that we had different pods of, of focus groups and stakeholder groups. We had, I think, the union, each, either, each of the unions had an opportunity to speak with the search firms, and then staff, different... I don't know if they did different schools or not, but then they had different community opportunities at different times, so that different, you know, people could show up if they had a different time slot that was available to them. So this, this proposal only indicates one. So I would think that we would need more than that. And again, they're very California-focused. Which could be good to talk about.
I think it's probably likely that most of the pool is going to be California-based. So I don't know that that's such an out-of-the-ordinary thing. I also think that the job of an executive search firm, and they have obviously experience working with many, many districts, is to structure a search process that works for the community. So some of these questions, you know, obviously would be part of the thing, so...
I like the way that they laid out how important different experience and expertise is for the superintendent, personal attributes, district conditions. I kind of like the way they laid everything out. Any more for... Okay, let's go to the third one now. Leadership Associates.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. When we went up to California School Board Association Conference in late November, we, when I say "we", Laguna Beach sent a delegation up there, the superintendent, and some of the assistant superintendents, and, and two of my colleagues here. And we talked to a lot of people. You know, one of the things that's interesting about California School Board Association, I made the comment last night when I was up at the School Power, that those big conferences, in addition to everything else you can say about them, they're marketing opportunities for the lobbying firms, and the law firms, and the consulting firms. We heard a lot of good things from a lot of good people about Leadership Associates. And, and it's considered one of the best. And I was hoping that they would be one of the firms that we would choose. I think that if you talk about what happened with Dr. Culverhouse, I think that actually argues in favor of considering them. And what's interesting is that any, any firm we pick right now, we're going to be working probably, if we are doing this, we're probably going to be working with some retired superintendents. And if you, if you, if you pick anybody for an interim superintendent, they're probably going to be a retired superintendent, and these firms have retired superintendents working for them, and so does Leadership Associates. The point is that neither Dr. Culverhouse nor a leadership consultants, you know, had any, there was nothing that they did that was in any way irregular, or improper, or not, not forthcoming. And so I think if you want to talk about creating a political problem, you could create a political problem by saying that because we chose Dr. Culverhouse, and she has the same issues that any superintendent, any retired superintendent is going to have in terms of her retirement status with STIRS, and her, you know, whatever other issues that were raised, and her relationship with her firm. And those, those were all things that could have and should have been worked out. And whoever we pick, either as a search firm, or if we do an interim superintendent, will have those same issues. But the point I'm making is that I think that if we were to say that somehow Leadership Associates is disqualified because they had a qualified person who was, whose retention as an interim superintendent was approved by our board, and therefore, they've got some kind of a problem, I would think that we would be asking for some unneeded complications.
I actually said something very different than that. I said Leadership Associates, through no fault of its own, because it's a very good firm, and I have also talked to people from there, got pulled into some ugly political transition here. Not their fault, not, I'm not saying anything that the firm is bad, but they do need to come into a situation where they, they need to have the trust of all of the parents and stakeholders in this community. And I'm pointing out that an issue happened. I didn't blame the firm, nor did I malign the firm in any way. I think they're a great firm. But there is a problem that was created in December, and I'm mindful of that. Because we want all the teachers, all the parents, all the stakeholders here to feel like they're working with a firm that doesn't have any other kind of baggage around this whole transition. That's all I'm pointing out.
Yeah.
I wasn't aware of baggage associated to them? Well, but you did. So I wasn't, well, I wasn't going to, there was no drama. I mean, I didn't, I wasn't aware that any of that was associated to them. So I'd just say, let's evaluate the company for their proposal and move forward. Thank you.
And Sherry, you asked a question about Stephen Keller. So he worked in Laguna Beach from 2000 to 2006, so for five years. Assistant Superintendent. Instruction.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, let's look at McPherson and Jacobson. Questions?
I think my only concern with this company, if we had to look at one, well, what I liked about them is that they really, they really, I repeatedly mentioned non-traditional candidates. I think so did Leadership Associates. But what is a non-traditional candidate at the same time? So that's a question. But they're also not of California. They're in Des Moines, Iowa, I think. Hmm, that's true.
Their lead person, I think, is from Riverside. I, I would like to narrow it down to two.
Is there two that you prefer? I mean, does everybody have two that they want to mention? See if we have any consensus on two?
I, you know, I don't know how helpful it was, but I did do the evaluation sheet on everybody. And the ones that came out the highest on my evaluation were Educational Support Services Group and Leadership's... Education Support Services Group, number two.
I'm sorry.
And Leadership Associates, number three. And I can, I really like the depth of Leadership Associates. I actually worked on a superintendent search in another place with Peggy Lynch, and she was fabulous, their head. I, from working with them, I really trust them. I thought they were great.
May I be recognized?
Clerk Hills?
Yeah, I guess we're just going to, because I agree, I agree with both of your choices, or some combination. But I guess because I agree particularly with Leadership Associates, have to revisit the subject of why we would not do that. I disagree with that idea. I mean, to say that through no fault of the firm, they should not be hired. I don't understand the logic of that. Through no fault of the firm, something happened here on another matter, which should therefore cause us to disqualify this firm. I just don't think it's rational, but I want to go a little bit deeper. What is this political problem that existed? I don't quite sure, understand what happened. It was a public process, it was an open process. There was disagreement. There were, there was an offer made. There was an offer considered. There was, first of all, there was an expression of interest in the job by a qualified candidate. An offer was made to that candidate. The candidate welcomed the offer and was committed to doing it, and then there were circumstances that led to it not coming to fruition. In terms of nasty political, there was a very difficult meeting that took place on December 16th for a lot of reasons that we don't necessarily need to go into now, although I'd be quite willing to do it if necessary. But the fact of the matter is that, in terms of what happened here, I was not yet a board member when, in my case, I had a couple of conversations with Dr. Culverhouse, and that's a matter of, of, you know, common knowledge. I was not yet subject to the Brown Act at that time. And, but on the other hand, my colleague, who was on the board at the time, phoned Dr. Culverhouse.
Excuse me, Clerk Hills, we're getting a little bit off the topic.
Well, well, the topic is whether there was some kind of political problem that would cause us to disqualify this firm. I'm just saying, I don't think there was a horrible political problem.
Okay, thank you for your opinion.
School districts commonly have difficulty making appointments, and this was probably, on a scale from 1 to 10, this was a 3.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not going to respond to any of that, because I don't think it needs to be rehashed for the 15th time. I have restated my concerns about whether or not there is a relational problem around going into a search that is very important for the community, and we need to have a firm that has everyone's trust and doesn't have prior relationships with people on the board. I'm just stating my concern. We don't need to go into it. That's what we're here for, figuring out which firms to bring in. Based on what we've talked about, I am, I do support President Perry's suggestion for Education Support Services. And I also support bringing in education... Sorry, it's hard to flip back and forth on these. I should have written it down. Education Leadership Services. So, those were my two. It sounds like you want to bring in Leadership Associates anyway. I stated my concern. I stated my two firms I would bring in.
May I be recognized?
Clerk Hills?
Yeah, well, okay, by that standard, Stephen Keller worked here, so his firm's out. And, and so, no, it is the point. He left under very controversial circumstances, so his firm's out. So then we got to find out if there's anybody in any of these other firms that have any connection with anybody in this room, or with this district.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hills, you're misunderstanding. I'm not talking about Joanne Culverhouse, I'm talking about you. Okay, that was the problem. That is the relationship to the firm. We had a problem with the transition. I'm not rehashing it here. I stated my concern. If you want to bring them in, bring it in. Bring them in. But I don't think we need to rehash December 16th for the 15th time. Let us move on and talk about the firms we're bringing in.
Okay, let's, if we...
We have to apply, we have to apply the same standard to all the firms.
Member...
No, it's not the same standard.
If we don't have further questions, would, do you have another question?
Member Perry, I'd like to propose that we bring in three. These are public interviews, so it's not like there's going to be anything nefarious that is going to transpire in a public discussion between the board and these potential client, these potential firms. So I like, I liked Leadership, I liked the third one, Leadership Associates. I did not put the two together, because it came and went so fast. I respect Member Malcheski's request for number, for the, for the Education Leadership Services. I was going to go two and three. I can throw away four. But to maybe find a compromise, if we could bring in three, those first two, those first three, that would be a good one.
Okay, before we vote on anything, though, I'd like to take a public comment, if there are any. Are there any public comments? Clerk Hills?
Oh. No.
My understanding was we changed some guidelines. So I think all of us are trying to understand what the new guidelines are. I think the spirit is, there's a discussion, and because agenda items are coming out, and they're a little bit vague, we can come here and understand the nature of discussion, and then have the opportunity to respond. Is that correct?
Correct, absolutely. Correct, absolutely.
I'll do it quickly. So Howard, I, just because you propose that your concern about, or the concern in the community about how the process happened are irrational. I'd like to make it very clear. We don't trust you. We don't trust your motives, and at this point, question your competence. So just to make that clear. Thank you.
So mine's more in the line of some questions. So when are you going to make the proposals online available? Would have, would have helped if we could read them. Kind of hard to make comments if we haven't read them. We faced a similar situation in selecting an audit firm for some serious issues with the city and the financials. They buzzed through five interviews in three hours. So there is a way to do it, structure, there's, you can get through. My suggestion, if you've only got four, take four, but I understand why you want to narrow it down and keep it crisp. Is, are the, was it an RFP process and is it closed? In other words, are more going to come in or is four it? So if four is it, no more coming in, if you want to take three, take three, take four. And I'd look forward to posting those proposals online so we can get a, get a sense of who those firms are. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conlin, can we post those online?
The proposals?
I would believe as part of the board item on the meeting, the next meeting, when you go ahead and have the discussion, that we, you would have some type of background on each of the, each of the firms. Yes.
Perfect.
Okay, so at this point, shall we go ahead and vote? No?
If you're going to ask for three, you need to amend the motion. Otherwise, you're voting for four.
So I move to amend the motion to bring forward the first three. Search firms, Educational Leadership Services, Educational Support Services Group, and Leadership Associates.
I second that. Any more discussion? Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? It passes, we will bring in three of the four firms. Okay, our next item is Board Direction regarding sand volleyball courts. And I'm, I'm the one responsible for this. I was looking to see if we could possibly fast-track the sand volleyball courts because they aren't as expensive as many of the projects that we're looking at. And when the staff meets with the city, perhaps it could be a joint project with the city, as we have had other ones. And then we could also consider city properties like St. Catherine's or the south part of Eliso Beach, something like that. So I was just bringing it forward to see if we could engage with the city about this one. So, any questions?
President Perry, I will comment. I do serve as the student representative to the rec committee, and we've actually talked quite a bit about the sand volleyball courts. And like, I brought it up, like, how can we make, best make use of the new rec center in South Laguna? And from my understanding, there is some programming through, like, the club volleyball already there. So are you referring to, like, high school volleyball being able to play at, like, be able to use the gym, the new gymnasium at St. Catherine's?
I was looking at sand volleyball.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so we discussed that too, because there's a tournament that comes in every year, you know, that turned like the best in the west or whatever? And we were talking about that. And I guess it was really hard to use any more beach space because the sand was the wrong gradient or something like that. They had, they've done, like, this rec department's like extensive, Alexis, who does the rec department at the city, has done a lot of research on it. And so I think, you know, and then Sarah Durand, who does School Power, brought up, you know, like, well, in the master plan, like, talk about TOW sand volleyball courts in the future, so maybe that's the link. But I know, like, as far as the beaches go, it's pretty maxed out because the sand gradient's wrong. It's like, the coaches won't play the kids down there because the sand gradient's wrong. Like, so like, you know, there's a couple courts at Main Beach, but like, they were like, can we go further down and things like that? And Alexis just said, they brought in sand consultants and they said no. So that's, that's the knowledge I have from the recreation committee and Alexis brought from the city.
Thank you for your expertise, Carter. I, you know, I don't know much about it. I thought at the south end of Eliso, there isn't, you know, there isn't that much going on if we brought, we could bring in some sand, but I guess not. Thank you.
Especially that area, because like, a bunch of people have brought up, like, nothing's going, you know, nothing's going down there. It's a big, nice, nice stranded beach, but it's like, type of sand down there and how it's packed is like, for the volleyball people's knee, you know, the volleyball players' knees and things like that. Yeah, much more than I thought I would know about.
Okay, thanks a lot. Any more?
When you say, when you talk about bringing in sand, were you talking about Main, at Main Beach? Like, they, they use the three courts that are there. You're talking about, they were looking at adding courts?
They were looking at adding courts specifically for that best in the west tournament that comes in area with the best, the best teams that come in. They were looking at putting temporary courts up potentially, and then like, okay, what does that look like long-term? And then someone brought up, okay, what about Eliso, like President Perry had said? And then Alexis was like, yeah, we looked down there, and this, something about how the sand is down there and the tide just didn't work out with the courts down there. So, I mean, I imagine they're probably interested in looking into other locations too, the city, just because of, you know, the beach, it looks like it's kind of limited.
Right, and I know that this has become a bigger and bigger sport for girls and scholarships. So do you think it would be worth it to work with the city on this and see if there was another possibility?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would, I think it would benefit to work for the city, for our students, well, as just the greater community at large. Because, I mean, if you go down, you know, the time is very, like, the high schools to go down there during a certain times, they've obviously reserved it with the city. And like, the programming's limited for, you know, our programs as well as the city's program. So definitely something that looks like alternate locations in the future, yeah.
So, President Perry, first of all, thanks for putting this on here. I think it's great that we're talking about something that we can do for the kids, and it is in the master plan. And I think it's always good to be talking to the city about how to meet some of these needs. But just as a reminder, there was a request to put these in at TOW in part because it adds to the amount of things kids can do at recess. It promotes volleyball from a young age. So I would just propose, in addition to anything you're trying to do, that we also consider the possibility that, you know, we sometimes get one-time funds that come in for various things. And I suggest that since it doesn't have to wait till the entire field's done, if we get one-time funds, this might be something we could consider doing and move this up earlier. I don't know, Mr. Dixon, maybe you can speak to whether that's a possibility, or maybe it's too soon to even talk about that, but.
I'd be happy to. So the way I'm hearing this item is there's two real actions that we can take. One is, from the district's perspective, look at ways that we can expedite the project. And we can look at Top of the World, but at the same time, we concurrently engage with the city of Laguna Beach and look at possible alternative locations for even more sand volleyball courts. Then the nice thing about Top of the World is it took advantage of a dead space of the field that's very underutilized currently, so they fit well there. But I think we can do both at the same time, and we can report that back to you.
Best of both worlds.
Don't we have the, the facilities committee, the joint use facilities committee? Isn't that what we formed? So if staff were to work with the city, if that's what we were to direct the staff to do, then we could, the committee could join that, and we could discuss the school as well as alternate sites. I know, me personally, I'd have to go back up and look at the site. I would be hesitant to have kids playing on the field when an outside hitter from the high school is going up for, to hit the ball. And, I mean, I know I was sitting in the stands during dodgeball, and a lifeguard threw the ball from across the court, and I decided not to play for various reasons, and afterwards thought I should have played because I would have been paying more attention, because I took a ball off the side of the face, and it took my hat, my hat off, my earrings off, and my face was numb for about half a day. So I would hate to see a kid on the field get hit by a ball randomly because they weren't paying attention, or, you know, you'd have to fence it. How high would the fences be? I mean, we've chased balls out of the street, playing ball down at Main Beach, so there's other factors there to consider before just dropping a volleyball court in at the elementary school, so.
So what we can do to get you some information on that is, I can highlight from the facilities' master plan where those courts were proposed, to show kind of the location on the field in terms of the facilities joint committee with the city. That was specific for the pool, the subcommittee. However, we do meet regularly, quarterly with the city, with our facilities team and their recreation team and maintenance team. And we can engage and see to what extent of interest they have in pursuing this with us first. And then once we know that, we can report back to the board as well.
Okay, so I guess I need a motion to direct staff to engage with the city of Laguna Beach to look at potential locations for sand volleyball in conjunction with our current approved master plan.
So, so I'm happy to approve, I mean, I'll second it, but I'm also wondering, like, is this the kind of thing we need a motion for? Can't we just ask Jeff to bring it up in the next quarterly meeting? Because the motion kind of implies that we don't do this regularly anyway. And I say that not to pick on you because I generally am slightly confused about the process, because we meet regularly with the city, quarterly, and with the rec committee, and we have people in this room, parents who are on the rec committee. So, I don't know. It seems odd that whenever we want to talk to the city about something, we would make a motion.
I, I agree. It does seem odd, but because it was under an action item, I thought we needed to make a motion.
Okay, so I would backtrack one more time and think, in terms of setting up the agenda, how we set up action items. I, I don't know if we needed to make an action item out of it. That's something to think about.
You, you can do it through consensus.
So what are we doing? Are we doing, we need a motion?
So we're doing it through consensus? Does everybody agree?
Yeah.
Consensus is to include the city in the conversation for locations for sand volleyball courts as well as the master plan, then yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Great. Okay, one more item. Item C, Board Discussion Regarding Board Poli, what? Oh, were there any more comments on sand volleyball? Okay. Okay, item C, Board Discussion Regarding Board Policy, 1100, Communication With The Public. I'm going to turn this over to Board Member Morgan for discussion. Member Morgan, the floor is yours.
So I had brought, I had asked to have this brought forward because as we prepare for working with the superintendent search, as well as some of the concerns lately with the fires, the data breach, the wind events, and then just coming off of the transition of the board, there's been a lot of questions about communications and just making sure that we're reaching the community at large, not just the parents. This is not, you know, the parents in our community or of our students are very important, but there's times where the greater community needs or wants to be informed as well. I know that we have our parent square means of communication that is color-coded to, you know, what groups it's trying to reach, and I thought that was great, but I know in looking at our board policy, which is what I, the piece of paper I seem to be missing, there is two parts to it that talks about how we have two-way conversations with the community and then also our comprehensive communication plan. And I know that right after I submitted the request for information from staff, we received a comprehensive communication plan that'll be rolling out here shortly. And it's a very, it's, I appreciate the hard work that went into this, and it's a very thorough report on the process and the theoretical foundation of communication. It identifies the audiences that we reach and the methods of which we reach them. I think my concern with the report and addressing the policy is that this is a great overview of how we push information out, but I want to make sure that we have taken into consideration how we have our two-way conversations as well as how we receive information. One of the concerns that has been a topic is the, one is the public records request. And in our, that's one item, and then also these two-way conversations as we get ready to do the superintendent search. There's, the company that we end up hiring will lead the different conversations, but I think in that as well, if there's back and forth that the community wants to, wants to engage in, or they want to request information. The public records request was behind, I guess. I noticed that it was updated, I think, yesterday or the day before, and in there was about three months worth of requests that came up starting November, so I guess that's two months, November and December that had not been there previously. And if, a request that I had made in October, it indicates, the response that I got was that it's the primary way of obtaining information from the district and other public entities, the public records request or the Public Records Act. So if that's our primary way of sending information out to the community, then, you know, what is our requirement to make sure that it's listed? So I, I think mostly what this is, is probably needing to make an action of finding the consistencies to make sure that we're following the consistencies of posting things online. If somebody makes a record request, that the information that is sought is posted when it's sought, so that it doesn't have to be keeping, to be repeated. And then what is our plan that's comprehensive about the two-way communication? I think those are the pieces that are still missing. And then if we have this beautiful comprehensive communication plan on how we push information out, is this going to be posted online? And I think the last part is, how do we engage the community to receive information that's relevant to them? I know I've talked to some people in the communities, they have concerns about, you know, the broader community having information about Boo Blast. Well, obviously, that's not necessarily relevant to them, but it might be relevant to them to know about an upcoming play or a track meet because the traffic's going to be difficult or down the road when the construction starts, there's going to be a lot of information that needs to go out. So I think I'm, I'm wanting to make sure that we're following not only the board policy, because there's some parts in there that aren't covered with the communication plan, and that we just go through and thoroughly make sure we've followed the policy and know what we have in place is what we're, what we're doing. Because I think there's a lot of discrepancies there.
Okay, so thank you for your, your questions. And I did receive your email this morning with the very similar questions. And I apologize, I did respond to the entire board a little after 3:30 this afternoon. But essentially, the two-way communication issue is, that's embedded in almost everything we do, and that starts with some things as simple as emails to and from the teachers, parent-teacher conferences, to as complex as setting up our subcommittees that we meet with various groups of interest. And as far as the California Public Records Act requests, the list that we maintain online is simply a courtesy, it is not a requirement. So just want to make sure that, that concern is mitigated because it's not something that we are required to do. But I did, I think it would be good for the board to review that email I sent this afternoon. And if you could, in addition to further questions you may have, please send the concerns that it's trying to address as well. Otherwise, it makes it more difficult for us to kind of guess what those would be, and we can come with recommendations for possible improvements if needed, and also clarify any other misunderstandings on our communications process.
Well, for example, some of the things that we push out, the two-way communication with emails and stuff to the teachers, with teachers and staff and things, those would be to the parent community within the district, but I'm thinking more the general community. And I know there's, there's people that, in the audience, that are not appreciative of the voice of the 79% that don't have kids in the district. But you do need to realize that 60, let's see, what is the data? 40% of our population is 65 and older. Well, a lot of those people are parents that had kids in the district or grandparents that had kids in the district, and they do want to know what's going on. They, and you're right, they don't need to know the classroom stuff. I mean, I got something today for seniors, seniors at the high school, and so that's not going to be relevant to the kids at the elementary. But there's things that go on at different, different sites that might be relevant to maybe the neighborhood. You know, if it's at the high school, maybe the people in the neighborhood around the high school need to be opting into something. So how can we do a more robust effort to reach the community at large, to engage in the two-way communications? I know we have, one of the data points that was provided is that we have an, that we can track the open rate. Well, the open rate, if you look at the open Well, the open rate, if you look at the open rate based on the data, it's only about 6%. So, 6% is good, but I think we could do a lot better in how we, in what we're, in who we're reaching. I mean, if we have 500 people that are, that we're reaching and they're opening it, and this open rate's 6%, that's still not enough people getting the information that we're trying to send out. So, I think we could do a better job of that, because, you know, we're always striving to improve. And so, how we can reach people, I think, is important. And opening these two-way communications, how our committees are chosen is probably another one that we need to make sure is clearly identified, so that there's maybe a vetting process for some of these committees, or an application like the cities do. And then, as far as the PRRs, I understand that it might not be a requirement, but for our district, if we're telling people that it's the primary way of obtaining information from the district, and there's no other legal obligation for the district to provide information in response to questions from the public, and that's the response that I got on District Letterhead, we have to be consistent in what we're doing. We can't pick and choose what we want to put on our public records request, because it's not really required, but everything else is. So, it's either all or not. But if this is how we've been doing things, is putting everything on public records, then it needs to be consistent, because that's how people are expecting to get the information, in my opinion.
I was part of that, deciding to put everything online. We were told legally we didn't have to, but our district made the choice to do that and be open. And I agree, I think it has to be for everything. I can't, we can't pick and choose which public requests we want to put up and which we don't.
So, just a couple of quick things, and then, I have a longer comment, but I'll wait. I question the whole 79% thing, that doesn't matter. But my issue is, is that all of these things that we want to do take away from time we spend serving our students. We have tons of information out there. It is in Stu News, it is in the Indy, we have It's A Rap, we send out notices to people. If people are interested in learning about the schools, it is very easy for them to find that information out. And we don't owe staff time to running around to people and saying, "I don't know if you looked at Stu News," or "took the time to look at this, but I just want to make sure you know X." That is not the job of the staff people that we have.
I don't think that's what it was.
No, but I'm saying, like, we have to be very careful in these conversations around what we're asking people to do, and what we, what we owe to whom. We work in a community where our job is to serve the students. And we do that in the context of a larger community that is not a majority even. Some of them have property interests, some of them have tax interests, some of them have children in the schools, some of them are alumni. They agree on nothing, so it's not appropriate to call them a majority. It's definitely not appropriate to say that they're silent, because some of them have had an outside role in what's going on here, because they follow everything that happens. So, I just think the framing of it is problematic. We are here, first and foremost, to serve our students. And that is what I'm concerned about. If, you know, we provide public records requests, we go above and beyond what the state requires. So, and I think that Mr. Dixon tried to respond today in the email about it. So, I, I don't understand what we want to do then, in terms of what you're asking for.
So, we have a policy. It very clearly states that we have two-way, we have plans for, and a robust two-way communication process. So, what is that process? Where is that? It needs to be outlined somewhere. We have a very clear statement made in a public records request, that obtaining information from the district is how we provide information. So, that probably needs to maintain a consistent manner going forward, because for the last two and a half months, nothing has been posted on public records request. We need to make sure that while, well, one thing to keep in mind, too, from the same conference that we were all at, one of the things that they made very clear is that, you're right, the Board of Education's number-one line item in the budget is education of our students. But good governance is the entire community.
Absolutely.
And then, well, communication involves the entire community. And it also says that in our bylaw. So, I'm just asking to make sure that, as we go forward, because we have all of these situations coming up, all these situations that have been happening, is that we're following what the policy says, and just double-checking and making sure that we're following that, because we didn't have the communications plan online. That appeared after I asked for it. We've been asking about public records requests. Suddenly, two months' worth of requests just showed up two days ago. So, I'm asking to make sure that we're following our policy. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. So, I support that, Mrs. Morgan. And if there's things that need to happen in the district, I think a lot of our staff have been very overwhelmed, and I'm sure Mr. Dixon will follow up on that. But I just want to say something more generally, on this night of honoring our students. We have a bylaws meeting in February already scheduled. When I saw this agendized, I was concerned, as a parent, that we had some communication emergency. I'm relieved to know that this conversation, once again, has nothing to do with students. But I'm kind of confused about why we needed to take up time on a night that we're celebrating students. So, I'm not saying that there's not an issue here, and that it's not worthy of a discussion. But I really want to remind the board majority that actual human beings are responsible for doing all this work. So, when you publicly question and criticize a communication plan that is award-winning in the state, we have... I know, I appreciate that. But it was, it was agendized with no information. And when you do that, it creates enormous stress for all of the professionals who are here, serving our students. And it alienates the parents who don't know what's going on.
Right now, I think you're speculating?
Nobody knew, including me, what this agenda item was about. And it was extremely stressful, it had to have been extremely stressful, for all of the professionals who have worked for years on putting this together. So, I would just like to ask, if we're going to agendize something, and again, I'm not saying you don't have valid concerns that you want to raise, and Mr. Dixon can follow up on them. But let's do this in a way that is kind and recognizes that we have human beings that are working really hard on behalf of students, and all this chaos we're creating is taking them away from serving students.
Excuse me.
Mr. Hills?
Yeah. You know, it's, it's really interesting, because whenever you say, you know, we're, we got to get back to where we're talking about the students. It's a good applause line. We can, we can wrap ourselves in the idea that some people don't care about the students and just care about adult issues, and some people really care about the students. And then, we can say that, you know, when you put something on the agenda that complies completely with the bylaws, that, you know, the state law and the bylaws say there should be a brief explanation, and you provide a brief explanation, which it's about Board Policy 1100. And so, suddenly, you're not about, you're not for the students. But, you know, the bottom line is that how the governance process works directly impacts the students. And the idea that if you're talking about volleyball courts, you know, you're, you care about the students. But if you're talking about, well, what does Board Policy 1100 mean, that you're not talking about the students. And so, you know, we have this process going on here, where, you know, the board president's being questioned about whether or not we should have a motion, or we shouldn't have a motion, and then, well, explains this as an action item, well, then, question the fact, well, you know, one of the issues that is at play here is, what is the role of the superintendent? What is the role of the board president? And, you know, how do, how does the communications process get managed? And, you know, I, before any of this came up, I went back and looked in September, and the Director of Communications for the district made a presentation here about her communication, about the district's communications programs. And, and then, today, we got this, this thing in the email about it, and it's, you know, an interesting plan. There are things about this plan that I don't agree with. Among other things, it treats the Board of Education as an audience of a communications program that's somehow separate from the Board of Education. And we're going to have a governance workshop in February, and I think we need to take a deep-dive look into this program. I know that it's based on a number of theories of communications, and it's won an award. I've worked in government agencies where you put together plans like this, and you get awards for it, and that's great, it's really good. But we've got to look at a couple of things that are going on here. Yeah. Yeah. You know, it's, it's interesting how somebody would want to make a number of assertions, and then, if somebody attempts to answer the assertions, then it's all about, hey, let's move on, let's not dwell on this, let's not go back in the past. So, I've got a couple of points I want to make here, if it's okay. First of all...
I think...
Excuse me.
Excuse me, Mr. Hills. I think, I think we're going to discuss this, then, in our, in our governance workshop. Would that be a better place to bring up your points?
Yeah. Well, that's what I was indicating, but in that case, I mean, that's what I previously said, that we need to address a number of these issues in the workshop. But I will just point out that Board Policy 1100 is not the policy that governs all of the communications issues. And, you know, Board Policy 1112, which is media relations, has a very different content to it than Board Policy 1100. And Board Bylaw 9121 also relates to communications. It says that "The President shall perform other duties in accordance with the law and Board Policy, including but not limited to, in conjunction with a superintendent or designee representing the district as the Board spokesperson for communications with the media." That's saying that the Board President represents the district in communications with the media. And it goes on to say that "The President of the Board is the, leads the Board's advocacy efforts to build support within the local community at the state and national levels." So, if you look at Board Policy 1100, it has no role for the Board President, and that's what we're looking at. But if you look at the actual bylaws that govern it, it says, and the reason this came up for me is that I asked about this after our first couple of meetings. I asked the staff, I said, "What is the role of the President in this communications process?" Because it's, having worked in government for a number of years, it was, seemed very logical to me that the Board President would work with the communications staff. But what was happening here is that the Board President wasn't working with the communications staff. So, it is for the students to work these problems out and find out what actually, and we will address that in the governance. But the point I'm making is that this plan and the practices that have been going on in this district are not consistent with the bylaws and with the state law behind the bylaws. And we're going to have to sort that out, and I'll rest my piece until we get to the governance workshop. But there's a lot that needs to be sorted out, because Board Policy 1100 is not the controlling document, organic document of the district. 9121 is the bylaw that is the controlling, organic document of the district, and we're not following it. So, I look forward to working with the board, because in the end, getting governance right is for the students, as much or more than anything else we do.
Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Hills. So, I have, that we'll, we'll relook at 1100, 1112, and Board Policy 9121 at our, those will be part of our meeting.
When is that? In February?
I think it's February 23rd.
Also, 9,500.
Okay. We need to have comments from the public, and we need to have any motions.
Beg your pardon?
Yeah, we have public comment. The way we were doing it tonight, we were trying to accommodate some of the...
The public comment was coming after discussion. We're not, we're not voting on this.
I think if there was a motion, I had, the people that asked me, I had said, "If there is a motion, the motion would be to direct staff to, to, to look at the first half of 1100 and update or provide the dialogue, the, the information on the two-way communications, and to investigate the public records request, because we are consistently posting, so we should be posting, and the, just to make sure that we're following it, the review of it, any modifications or anything like that, is not until February." That was all the motion was going to be, was just to make sure that we're following the policy as it states, not anything else.
Okay. I can second. Comment?
Are you calling for public comment?
This was actually not agendized as an action item, it was discussion only.
Oh, okay. Well, it said "action" at the top.
But the actual item was agendized as a discussion item. When you look at the type, it says "discussion."
I had asked for it as an action, just in case there was something to be done. Well, I think that we need to have better guidance when the President's putting the agenda together, then, because I had asked for it as an action.
Thanks. Real briefly, I would again ask just the board, please review that email I sent you this afternoon. Send me some, any follow-up questions. And then, I would please ask, going forward, more criticizing different work for individual staff, we're a very small district, and so, it becomes evaluatory in a public meeting. And so, I'd ask the board to please just focus on the Board Policy addressed in the item, and let's leave the criticisms of the work out, so that no one can pinpoint kind of who that is. So...
Okay. Public comment?
Okay. The, the idea here was that, because some people weren't sure about what the agenda item meant, that after the discussion, we would then have the public comment. So, the first speaker is Elena.
So, we're doing just A right now? B, C? Oh, I missed all the good stuff. I'm incredulous at what's going on here. And you keep kind of steering this down some path that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. You, Sherri, are throwing Joan under the bus for something that Howard said, and I don't, I can't really comment on the rest of it. Board policy about communication, there should be a communications secretary who handles all of the communications. Okay? Whatever it goes out to, media relations, public relations, none of this has to do with the 79% of the community, other than those people who are interested, coming to find out. Okay? We are the 79% here. Might be a little bit more than that. And Sherri, you might want to consider running for city council, if you're concerned more about the 79% than you are for our children and what's going on in the district. You're here on a school board, your only concern, your only job is to work with the rest of the board and the interim super, or is that interim interim? Act, excuse me. This all just gets away from me. But really, you guys need to start working together as a board, and you present the items that you want to your president to make the agenda appropriately. And if it's supposed to be an action item, it needs to say that, and you need to make that motion at the beginning. And then, you second it, and then, you open it up for discussion. That's Robert's Rules of Orders. It's real simple. So, start doing the job for the school board, and not for whatever your special interest, that's 79% of the community. Thank you for being here.
Thesa, is it there?
I'm, I'm shaking right now, and I'm going to speak as a staff member and president of our union. This is so disconcerting tonight, to listen to the people who are supposed to be supporting us disparage any of, yes, there was. When you talk about the communication people, there are people in this room that work very hard every day for our students and for this district. And our staff is already upset that we've had a school board member write a letter And our staff is already upset that we've had a school board member write a letter to the editor disparaging and blaming staff for something. You're supposed to be protecting us and not, you have to do better. I'm sorry, you have to do better. I am shaking. And I am so upset because that's the one thing I've been getting from our staff members is what the heck is going on? And they're not protecting us. They don't care about us? So my heart is pounding right now. I'm stunned. Work together. We need you to do better. And our staff is some of the best staff in this state and in this county. We care. It doesn't matter if we live in Laguna Beach or not. We care. Everyone that is working with our students care. They care to be here every day. They care to drive an hour into town to work with our students. So have a little more compassion and empathy about what you say, please, and think about what you say. Because we're listening and it matters. I have to go to work tomorrow, and I know that people are going to be asking me, what is going on? And I don't have an answer. So please, do better for us. Do better for our community. Think about it and get along. You might not always have to agree, but please get along and think about what you're saying about our staff. Because we're some of the best damn staff around. Thank you.
Ms. Sodol?
Thesa, that was awesome. And on behalf of all the parents who are with you and support you and support the staff here who are doing an amazing job every single day, working their butts off for our kids. I do want to say that this agenda item was really confusing. There was not enough description. It would have been very helpful to have some more background and context. We did actually email all of you all, and Sheri was kind enough to send us some more additional information. But it is confusing when it's listed as an action item. But it's not an action item, and it helps us as parents to know. So I just ask that you try to fix that next time. I do also want to say that because of my information gathering, what I know about our email open rate is that it's a 70%, 80% open rate. I don't know where you got that 6% number. It's just wrong. And the fact that you said that out loud here is just atrocious. I also want to say that, now I'm going to start crying. When we talk about two-way communication with the larger city, and I brought this up with Sheri yesterday, I am deeply concerned about student safety. There is no need for the larger city to know about most of what goes on with our students. Because what ends up happening is, not saying everyone out there, but there certainly are some bad actors in our city. And when they come to do some harm, they're coming to do some harm to our most vulnerable. And I will put black and brown children in that category. My kids have certainly been on the receiving end of those things in the city, and I definitely don't want that coming at them in what's supposed to be the safest space for them while they're not with me or my husband. So hear me out now. And I'm grateful for the communication staff for having an eye towards that and being empathetic to those kids who need their protection in that way. It is not the 79% that I care about, Sheri. I care about our kids. That's it, and their safety. Everything else happens. The city lets everyone know about construction or whatever's going on. There's lots of different ways that that happens. And we don't need to put our kids at risk because a couple guys who don't want a pool belt need more information a little bit faster. The other thing I want to say is, Howard, you're a lawyer, and I know you get really jazzed up about all these board policies and stuff, but it's so distracting. There's so much stuff that actually has to get done that is way more important. And there's a calendar for all of these discussions to happen in sequence. And bringing all of this up, and I read, I've downloaded all the board policies because apparently it's now my job to make sure I'm conspired with you at any meeting here. But that policy doesn't say that she's the spokesperson. She has a job. The president has a job to do with the community, but she's an advocate for the board and as it relates to community and on a national level. So I'm happy. We can go, we'll do this together in February. But I just want to say, please, focus on what's important right now. Make sure we're getting our interim stationed, a very clear and transparent process for our search for super, and focus on our kids, please. Thank you.
Michael Morgan?
Hi, good evening. Michael Morgan, I'm a parent of a senior and three other children that have graduated from Laguna Beach School District. Actually, I think all those kids spent every grade from first grade all the way through their senior year of high school here. I would basically like, you know, to remind, I guess, first of all, the audience. There's a lot of speculation going on by the audience about what the true intentions are here, given, you know, a couple hours. Most of the board that sits up there spent a tremendous amount of time talking to citizens, talking to voters, going through the election cycle. And in doing that, you learn a lot about the community, the city. And I think everyone here knows, they're just choosing not to remind themselves that it does take the entire community to raise and build and, you know, navigate the space from, you know, through graduation of high school and then on off, hopefully to launch to college, career, whichever path you choose. So to think that people here don't care about the staff, do not care about the teachers, do not think education is the first priority, I would say is dead wrong. I encourage the board to do better, absolutely. But I think that, don't get distracted by, I think, some of the loud and vocal people that are telling you you don't care about the kids. Because I have talked to each and every one of you, and I know you all care about the kids. So I encourage you to remind yourself about that. I would like to encourage that the previous, I'll say, board and superintendent have a very strong reputation and have now passed, you know, passed that baton on to you all. But their reputation was that they hid a lot of things. There was not transparency, something that I know, I personally heard time and time and time again over the last six months, that you had to seek out agenda items. You had to go search for things. So please continue your pursuit of transparency, do better on the agenda. I know it says action item right on that this topic we're discussing right now. But, you know, the audience should give you a little bit of grace to get trained, to get caught up for those of you that have been on the board for several years. Maybe you can take the lead on some of that to be better. But to selectively and subjectively judge things like PRRs and not post every single request up, I challenge you to pass that motion, that every single PRR should be pushed up. And that is what transparency is built on, is that so no one hides or no one's worried about something being hidden behind the scenes. So, thank you.
Newt Morris?
Newt Morris, father of three kids in the district. My wife Claudia is on PTA and volunteers regulate the schools. Since the last couple of months, I've actually been doing some research on other schools because there's been a lot of misinformation that's come out. So I've been particularly focused on smaller school districts and affluent areas. And I have to say, compared to Carmel, compared to San Jose, the amount and quality of information that is published by our school district dwarfs what's out there. So I commend the staff for what you put out there. The transparency is better than what the other districts are doing. Now, I actually wasn't thinking about talking about this tonight, but I've been doing some thinking about this number 79. And as far as I can tell, where you get the number 79 is from the 2023 year report, which states that, and the way that you used it tonight, was 79% of our residents. 2023. And actually, that number that's in there is 21.8% of Laguna Beach households are directly involved in the schools. So this number's been used really to make two points, one of which I would characterize as the get off my lawn argument. And this is shades what the cynical Laguna guys want. Like, they don't want whistles in a construction project. The other part of this argument is how funding happens. So, in fact, the number 21 is correct. It is the number of households that are involved in the school district. But you know the thing about households with kids is they have more than one person in them. And so in terms of number of residents in the city of Laguna Beach, it's closer to 40% of the number of residents that are involved in the school district. Now, 50% of the housing stock in Laguna Beach has turned over in the last 20 years. Most of that's either going to new families or second homes. So there's not just a lot of old people that are around trying to have a nap. The second thing that matters, and this comes back to is how the schools are funded. This argument I'll call the kids are stealing from retirees. Couple things on this. All these second homes that have transacted in the last 20 years pay a significantly higher property tax rate. And as of 2016, the city of Laguna Beach had the eighth lowest aggregate property tax rate in the state because of the number of long-term residents. That adds to a lot here. So there's, in fact, the kids are not taking from the retirees. Both of us are being subsidized from the second homes. This is Susie Q. This is the school district. So beyond that, and so the way that the state funding, the state mandate of dollars comes in, the school district gets about 25 cents on the dollar of property tax. The city gets 25 cents on the dollar. But the thing is, the school district is bigger than the city itself. The school district includes parts of Liso Vio, unincorporated areas in Emerald Bay, Crystal Cove, and Irvine Cove. That incremental property tax is measured, the incremental assessed value of that property is measured in the billions, and that nets out to $20 million more or so that comes in the school district. So it's inaccurate to talk about the 79% the way you've been talking about it. But more than that, it doesn't matter because it's the 21% that you guys are here to be serving. Thank you.
Eva Pauling?
I actually had no intention to be speaking tonight, but Howard, again, after your comments that were directed to Anna Karen and really dismissive about her work, I just want to say in front of everybody in here, you owe her an apology. That woman works incredibly hard and has done so much for this district. And for you to diminish that in the two months that you have been present here is a complete violation of the intent of your role here and what you're supposed to be doing. That's all.
Hi, yeah, this is a public comment session. That was public comment, right?
Right. It's the public. It's not us.
What's that?
It's not us commenting. It's the public. Is there more public comment?
Yeah, well, members of boards can request to make a comment on public comment.
We can't do that right now. We need to finish our public comments.
Are we not done with the public comment?
I don't know. Do you have any more?
I think we're done. I don't have any other cards. Those are from earlier. So if anybody wants to say more, that.
Why don't you just come up? I don't know where the card went.
I didn't. I put two separate cards. Hi, it's Keta. Wow. Yeah, the action discussion, that would have been really nice to know that this wasn't going to be acted upon. And I appreciate your email, Sheri, I do. This is absolutely gobsmacking to me. I sat on that board for 12 years, 12 years. And yeah, it was cool. I worked hard at it. And I absolutely, absolutely never, ever thought to denigrate the work of the fine people who sit alongside you and out in this audience. And there's absolutely no room for that, none. It is absolutely unconscionable, and I for one won't stand for it. And you can speak to them privately and say things can be done better, but this district pushes out so much information. All you have to do is drive past one of the sites. You know what's going on. To the point, Stu News, everywhere, the big board at the high school with all the lights. I mean, it's not hard. And to Howard's point about the president speaks, the president, if there is something that comes out, it has usually been whoever the president is that is called by Stu News or called by the Indy to make a statement. That is it. It is not anything that she or you want to just come out and say. There has to be a coordinated effort to get a message out, which is why Anna Karen is so good at what she does, because she makes that effort to get that coordination and so we don't sound like idiots and we sound like we know what we're doing. And I really, really, really have to say again, you, don't you ever speak about these people the way you've been speaking about them.
Hey, yeah, shaking face. I think it's for what you said. Thank you, everyone. I'm going to try to stay on subject, so comms, communications. I have to reiterate what Shaheen said, like greater public knowledge about individual students and things that are very personal to all of us is a really big deal. So giving us more background when it comes to items like this being brought up on the agenda, like we're gonna freak out because it's our kids, right? And you say you're up there for our kids, and now it's like, no, 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 the 79% number that I have heard from some of you more times that you have sat up there than the word students, right? 79. Well, you know what? My parents live here. They're part of that 79%. And I tell them the things. They pay attention. They dial in. My sister lives here with her husband and her two children. They don't have kids in the district yet. But they're engaged. They're involved. Information is available. I want your time and resources to be spent supporting our staff and the incredible job that they do, are trained for, hired for, and they know what to disseminate to us. President Perry, like, you're not the spokesperson for the whole district, right? You are a working member of this team, and we have a ton of very qualified people who are in positions to support all of us. No one, like, I'm sorry, but you're not the spokesperson for all of these amazing people who work really hard to do an incredible job. And they continue to set the bar higher and higher, and that concerns me. And you're up here talking about this, and we need, we need an interim superintendent. We need a search firm so we can start searching for a superintendent, not battling over communications right now, right? And it's just really disheartening to see this and the arguing. And we're gonna continue to worry because this is what we see right now, right? This is what we're getting from you, and it's very, very worrisome. Thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Richard Arum, I have a student in eighth grade here who's been attending, sorry, seventh grade. I have, Richard Arum, I have a student in seventh grade here. And I want to speak on two comments. First, on educational leadership. So it's not educational leadership disparaging staff, teachers. Educational leadership is supporting them and motivating them. And I want to commend Jeff Dixon tonight for having the courage to say that when this came up. Second, I'm also myself a school board member at the Samuel Lee Academy Charter School in Santa Ana. It serves youth in Santa Ana and also foster youth. I've been on that board for eight years now. I'm an educational expert. Let me tell you what I did the first year when I was on that board as an educational expert. I listened. I didn't say much of anything because I knew that I didn't know things. I had humility. And I think where we're going off the rails here is not that all the board members. And I think where we're going off the rails here is not that all the board members don't care deeply about the kids, I know that to be true, and I applaud Mr. Morgan for reminding us of that tonight. But where we're going off the rails is we have two new board members who don't know what they don't know. On the communication plan, they didn't know there was, it seems like until today, they didn't even know there was a communication plan. They also maybe don't know, because they haven't been on the board for a full year, that communication, parent engagement is in, in myriad places, state and federal reporting requirements and plans that you have to approve as a board, it's everywhere. You might not know that because you're new to the board. So please, say less and listen more for a few months until you figure out what to do because we have to come together as a community to do, to do well for our students.
Madam President, if I can be recognized.
Yes, I'm, I'm recognizing Mrs. Weber right now, she's making a public comment.
Thank you. I just want to say a couple of things about staff and how hard we all work. It's been repeated, but I'm going to put it out there for all of us. It is very frustrating when we get nebulous board items. We could simply pick up the phone or write us an email and ask a question. For years, Sheri and Howard have stood out here, lamb blasted us for things like not putting backup items on agendas when they're clearly there and saying that the agenda items don't have enough information when they're paragraphs long. And then we get a request for an agenda item with absolutely nothing on it, and we have to ask for a sentence. It's not right, and it's very frustrating. We are open to communicating, we just need the questions to answer. I take great offense to the statement that staff has been hiding information on agenda and that have a poor reputation. We work our asses off to make sure that that agenda is more compliant than any agenda in the state of California as far as school districts go. We have never once hidden an agenda item, not put details in an agenda, and it is my job to ensure that it's right, and I take great pride in that. I take training after training, I lead courses, and I teach other executive assistants how to put an agenda together that does not have anything hidden in it and how to represent the district in a prideful and transparent, the word of the day, the word of the year, the word of the last 10 years manner. I implore you all to please, if you have a question, ask us. You don't need to put an agenda item on that doesn't tell anybody what's going on. You don't need to hide things. We are here to serve you. I am a servant leader. My position in this district is to serve, not just the students, not just the staff, but the board and leadership and our other staff members. Please, stop the fighting. Stop pretending you know everything. None of us know everything, and let's work as a team. Thank you.
I would ask to be recognized.
Yes, but the same three-minute rule.
What's that?
The same three-minute rule.
Okay. First of all, Mr. Superintendent, I spoke with you the other day after we had a meeting of the communications, and I told you that I understand the concern of staff because people are talking about changing and making some reforms and whatnot, and I said, we're very aware that staff might, because I've done this before in other contexts, I said, I'm very aware that staff might be uncomfortable with some of the things that we're talking about. And I said, but it's a two-way street. We need to have the ability to talk about things and have respect, go back, it's a two-way street. It's a mutual respect process, it's not a one-way respect process. There are a lot of issues that I can't go into right now here, but there are some serious problems that we're going to address at the governance thing. But, you know, when this communications thing got put on the agenda, what you came back to us with was this communications plan. And as I said, before any of this came up, I'd gone back and listened to the communications present, presentation in September. And, you know, the fact of the matter is that I've asked staff several questions. President Perry hasn't been saying, hey, I want to be a spokesperson for the district. What has happened is there's been inaccurate information, and we've tried to respond to that by saying, we need to work together and we need to look at, for example, we asked, in the transition, particularly when there's no superintendent, why shouldn't the board president be working with you and your staff on communications? And the answer we got back was in writing, and I've got it right here, was that the president has no role, but the bylaw says that the president works in conjunction with the superintendent. And so there's these problems, there's things that aren't right. And so then you today, in response to this, you sent us the, the plan, as if that's an explanation, but that doesn't answer that there are some problems in the communications area. So you put us in the position, you put me in the position, having to say, your answer to the concerns that have been expressed about communications is to give me this, this plan. And I'm saying that plan doesn't answer the concerns. Now, to the extent that that implicated an individual staff person, I do apologize for that. I don't, I've never, I've never intended to identify an individual staff person, but you're the one that in response to the concerns as a board member that I expressed, you offered that plan as your answer. So if you want to protect your staff, as I want to protect your staff, then we need to have better communication because the problems are not getting solved. And so all I got to say is, I deeply apologize if the fact that this is what's on the record, which is this plan that you gave us, this plan has a lot of merit to it, and I think it can be improved, and I want to work with you and the staff to improve it. But this has been going on for a few weeks now, and problems are not getting solved. And so then it's going to come out in a meeting where you make your answer, the, the plan. And so I'm not going to repeat myself anymore, but having said that, I apologize if the discussion that came out of this is identified with a member of the staff, and I apologize if that was hurtful in any way, but I would rather than just apologize, offer to work together with the staff through you, Mr. Superintendent, and address some of the problems that we're having in the communications field.
Thank you, Mr. Hills.
I brought this to the floor. I addressed some of the community members when they asked me what, I said, it's really simple. I said the same thing to Jeff, I said, look, I think this is really simple, to the staff that felt offended, I am sorry, that was absolutely not the intention. It was, it is exactly as I said, I think it's very straightforward, I think it's very simple. We have a policy on communication. I know people come to me and say, I don't get anything, I'd like to be updated, I don't know how to get into the communication or opt in, I don't know what that is. I mean, people don't know, there's, I have to go to my teenager to help me with TikTok, I mean, I don't know. So, right? So this was not meant to be contentious, it wasn't meant to upset people, it wasn't meant to offend anybody. I, it was very simply, we have, have had a lot of emergency situations, we've had, you know, the public record request was a very contentious issue at the last meeting, and things weren't appearing, so it was like, let's just make sure that we're very consistent in our, in our policy, because it is about good governance, it is about going forward and trying to mitigate some of the, the tension and the anger and the frustration. I, I really, whether you believe it or not, I do respect the differences of opinion, I respect the frustration, I do understand that because I have been on that side. Communication is key, and I have spoken to a lot of people that don't get the information that want it, they don't know how to get it, and that was my only intention, was let's make sure that we have this policy in place, it is very clear that there's the superintendent or designee, we had a point where we didn't have a superintendent for quite a few weeks, we don't know who was communicating, and so it was just to make sure we were very clear and that all of our bases were covered. It was not intended to create such a, such a chaotic conversation. I was very sincere in the people that reached out to me, which it wasn't a plethora, but there was probably five or six, I responded to every one of them. This is a very simple thing, it's, if there is a motion, because I did ask for an action, so if there was a, a lack of communication there, I'm sorry, I was driving down the roads, getting out of town, going to Mammoth, and I was told I need 20 words. I'm like, oh, 20 words, okay, let me put this together really fast. We have not been trained on putting an agenda together. I don't think Madam President Perry was ever invited to an agenda meeting when she was on the board, so if we aren't trained properly or know what's going on, then we need the training. I know, I think I've signed up for four things in the next two weeks, which I, I don't think any of them are on my calendars because I'm trying to work with three calendars, so when we talk about transparency and communication, I'm my own worst enemy sometimes. So I think for all of us, for the sake of our kids and to go forward, we all do have to work together, so thank you all for who said that. But it also starts with the community and us. We aren't trying to make mistakes, we're trying to do it right. And so when we see some of these, when I see some of these things, I'm like, hey, let's just make sure we're all transparent, because you guys are all asking for transparency. Things on public record, that's not being transparent, so I just wanted to make sure we were being consistent. So when we're asking for things, it has to work both ways, I think that's some of the messaging too, and that's it. I'm just, we're trying, we're, I know I'm trying, and I'm trying to be, you know, this was meant to be a very simple thing, it was not an insult, I said the report was very good, the percentage that we got for the open was just based on the numbers that were in the document, if that's wrong, then please, let's, let's help me out. You know, open rates are like, wow, that's a really cool number, open rate, I didn't know you could track that kind of stuff. So, you know, and I should, but it's, 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 we can always do better, and that's, that's the thing, right? We can always do better, and that's continual improvement, and so that's what, that's all this was about, is just making sure we're connecting all the dots. Things that are wrong with the policy, we'll address those later, but let's make sure the policies that we do have, we're following what they say. And I, that was one that I thought we had issues with because of all the emergencies and everything else, and I just wanted to make sure we had it. And so I appreciate that you forwarded the plan, it is very technical, it's very comprehensive, but it's also what we push out, and so the two-way, and that's why I was asking, and so you sent me the information, and I appreciate that. And, and that was it, it was meant to be very simple, and so please, if you were offended, I am sorry, that was not the purpose, it was not the intent, and I apologize, and that's all I'm going to say, thank you. So.
Certainly.
The public comment, it kind of gave a new perspective, I think, to probably Kate and I. Is the intention to push out more information about student activities, but I think some of the comments about like student safety and someone's kind of resonated with me, you know, there's, there's things that happen on campus that probably should stay privileged to stay on campus, like things that general public does not need information about, which I agree with. So is that the goal of this new communication, is push out more information or just to push it on more avenues?
More. For my purpose of, my purpose of mentioning it was. My purpose of mentioning it was, in the conversations that I've had, it was, I don't know how, I'm, I'm trying to be, you know, like, somebody wanted to be a part of a two-way conversation or a back and forth, like, which comes all the way back to the pool. Well, as that goes forward, how do we have better two-way communications? What is that process? If somebody wants to opt in for information, where, where do they go to opt in? Because some people don't know to find, they don't know how to find it, I get that it's there, but can we put an article in the paper, just, hey, if you want to make sure you're getting more information, this is how you do it. We can always communicate better, we can communicate more succinctly, remember, Hills? You know, we can, we can communicate more accurately on the agenda, Member, Member Morgan. I mean, you know, we all can do better. It was just, it's to make sure, because all these things are going on, that we have communicated how people can opt in, that we're opting in, we're offering the right things to opt in on, we have musicals coming up, let's get the whole community involved, how do they get the communication information? How do we make sure that our kids are protected so that we're not pushing out the wrong things? Is all of that, and it's all, and most of it is covered, but how do we engage more of the community is important because they do fund our schools. We can take away the funding if we don't want to count them, and I'm sorry if you guys don't like those numbers, right? So we need to at least respect them. No, no. Keep in mind, our whole community funds our school, so we need to respect that if they want to know how to get the information. That's all, that's all, that's all, that's all I want to say. That's all, it was just, how do we get the information out? Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Morgan. Anything else? I, I, I know everyone here really cares about our students, that's why we're here, and we do need to work together. And cares about our staff. Our next board meeting will be a special meeting on Monday, January 27th, to discuss the interim superintendent. The next regular meeting is February 14th. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second?
Second.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.